I'll call the meeting in the Waco City Council on August 15th, 2023 to order at 3:04 PM. Before we get started, I do think that you might notice a special guest with us today, and I didn't know if Councilmember Rodriguez wanted to give an introduction.
Thank you, Mayor. This is my great-grandson, Aaron Kirks. He's been taking— I've been ill, and I had the best nurse in the world. And he took good care of me. He starts school tomorrow, and so he asked me if he could come to the city council meeting with me today. He wanted to see what was going on. I told him absolutely, so I asked if he could sit up here with me, so he wouldn't be sitting over there by himself. So this is my great-grandson, Aaron Kirks.
Hey, welcome aboard. Appreciate you. Glad you're here. Next, please join me in a moment of silence and to shift quickly into Saturday news. We just learned earlier today that Steve Kroll, who was an engineer at Fire Station Number 10, and started working here in October of 1995, passed away this afternoon, lost a hard-fought battle to cancer. And so I think it's important that we remember him, and it felt so led individually, to keep his family in your prayers as we honor his legacy with gratitude for his service to the city. So please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. We provide an opportunity for the public to address the city council on any agenda item or during the hearing of visitors portion of the agenda. On items other than public hearings, speakers will be allotted one three-minute presentation, regardless of the number of agenda items the speaker wishes to address. If you're here to speak and have not filled out a registration card, please see the city secretary, staff at the registration table outside of the auditorium to provide registration information so that staff can contact you if necessary. If you have handouts, please let me know at the beginning of your presentation, and staff will distribute those to council. If you're unable to approach the podium due to physical limitations, a microphone is available to be brought to you. Is there anyone present who would like to speak on a work session agenda item? Seeing known as registered, we will now recess the regular session and reconvene to work session with a report from our city manager.
Thanks, Mayor, and good afternoon to the council and our special guests. Glad to have you at the dais. We have no changes to the agenda today, and I'm going to work right into two public hearings. I wanted to highlight the first, which is Public Hearing 581 regarding budget amendments for city projects at the Riverfront Development, including the parking garage, underground utilities, Clay Avenue reconstruction, University Parks reconstruction, the Riverwalk, Lake Brazos Park, as well as the associated construction manager contract work and contingency funding. These went to the TIF Board recently and were approved by a vote of three to two. As a reminder, that's like six projects all rolled up into one and put on a very small property. It's been quite a lot of fun to see staff work on all that. Second public hearing you'll hear later is Public Hearing 582 regarding the establishment of a street maintenance fee, which we've been discussing at length since about this time last year and throughout the city's budget process this year. As a reminder, once adopted on second reading here in a few weeks, hopefully this fee would begin collection in January 1st, 2024. We built in a sunset provision as well at council's suggestion to allow for the future city councils to review and require council action to continue the program past 2029, which I thought was an innovative strategy, and appreciate the council's feedback on that. We have a total of 27 resolutions today, and I'm going to highlight several of them. The first is Resolution 583 for our tax rate. At our last meeting, staff presented the 2023 certified total roll to city council. This resolution that's on the agenda today would set the city of Waco 2023 tax rate at 75.5 cents. And that—it also sets the associated public hearing date, as well as the time and place of the meeting at which council will vote on the proposed tax rate. That would be on September 5th, right here in the Boski Theater at 6:00 PM. I'm pleased to bring you the recommendation today. For that 75.5 cent tax rate marks the third straight year of tax rate reduction and brings us to the lowest tax rate for the city in 10 years. We have some great resources online, and invite the public to take a look at on our budget that provides further details, including the residential property owner impact statement that you're seeing now on the screen. And I would just invite the public to go to www.waco-texas.com/budget. And there's a number of resources there to learn a little more about our budget and our tax rate and what we're going to do with the resources that you provide us. Second resolution I wanted to highlight today—I have a little bit of a technology problem.
As you're doing that, Bradley, I just want to say I appreciate the team's work to put this information in a communication—the communication packet together for the budget information. It's really been, I think, helpful, and I've gotten a lot of comments from residents to say, "What is a complicated document? What is a complicated budget?" Was really broken down in a way that they could understand and digest. And I think that as we work to be a transparent city and work to really ensure that our residents know where their tax dollars are being put to work, we have good communication pieces that have been made available to them. And are you still having technology difficulty?
Let's see how long you can do this.
I'm installing. Keep dancing.
No, that's fine. Perfect. Good job. Our second resolution I wanted to highlight is 584, and it is a resolution awarding a contract on our financial advisor. And we're actually making a change this year. You know, the council is well aware of this because we presented it at the budget audit meeting last week. But this resolution awards a contract for financial co-advisory services to PFM Financial Advisors, as well as TGL LLC, and authorizes the city manager to execute any documents in accordance with. I'm excited about this change. I think the two firms, this co-advisory model, is going to be a change for us, but having the two resources will be very helpful for our staff and for me as manager to bring several different voices to the table as we start to think about continued infrastructure investments, as well as economic development strategies to deploy. I don't know, both of those teams are in the audience today. I saw—there they are. Sorry. Yeah, giveaway. Thank you, guys, for being here. Third resolution is Resolution 587, dealing with our airport art. This resolution approves two artwork designs for the final two art pieces at the Waco Regional Airport Terminal Building Modernization Project. It's a mouthful. The council did review these at the August 1st meeting two weeks ago, and we've made the final edits, as we have discussed, based on that feedback. And I think we've got one image here on the screen, and any more to show? No more? All right.
I just want to comment really quickly and say I'm glad they were very clearly listening at the last meeting when Councilmember Holmes pointed out the need to reflect that the bridge be a suspension bridge. So it's the first thing I looked at this time, and there are no additional pillars there, so.
Details matter.
Actually, correct image here. Thanks, Councilmember Ewing.
And before you move on, Bradley, I did want to mention, I know that it is not easy to make change in our cities. And that the city management and staff, and especially the finance team, are looking to shake things up a bit, speaks volumes to your leadership and the direction that our city is going. Old Pastor used to say, "If nothing changes, nothing changes." And I think in the direction that our city is going with the growth trajectory that we're on, it is essential to make wise choices. So I'm really supportive of this change, and I look forward to the impact that you all will make on the city of Waco.
Thank you, Councilmember. Wanted to highlight Resolutions 590 and 591 next, both of which approve agreements to provide home investment partnership program, American Rescue Plan dollars to local projects in an amount of $550,000 each. First project is Freedom's Path, which is next door to the Doris Miller VA facility on New Road. And then the second facility is, of course, Page Estates Project in South Waco. Both have been on the drawing board for quite some time, and I'm real pleased to be bringing these items forward. These projects were presented to the council last week at budget and audit, but as a reminder, Freedom's Path would include 34 affordable housing units for veterans who are homeless or at risk of homelessness. And Page Estates Project includes 64 units for seniors, 54 of which will be affordable housing units. And real pleased with the private market coming to the table to help us solve affordability issues, and certainly thankful that we have federal resources to supply into the projects to deal with some of their construction cost increases.
Holmes here on that one. Yeah, great job on this, and these are federal funds that are coming in through the American Rescue Plan. And I also want to commend Deputy City Manager Emerson, who's back there. I know that you're managing this process and trying to figure out—any of these affordable homes, as you said, are almost 100 living units that we're able to support through ARPA. And I appreciate your management of Deputy City Manager Emerson of the process, not only figuring out where it goes, but it has to fit precisely within the program. You have a timeline in which it has to fit, and these aren't—we just get dollars in and throw them out the door. There's a lot of thought that goes into this, and I think these two in particular are very impressive. Looking forward to seeing those join the Waco community, and appreciate your work on that. I want to just back up—this is while we've got the floor here—on number four there, 586, another state program that we are using for funding. This—the other one that we talked about, the 100 units living units was a federal, but the state program—I know we haven't gotten the money yet, but the application for 2% funds of over $5 million. I know we don't have it yet, but I appreciate staff's commitment to trying to find funding, wherever it's coming from, state, federal, particularly at that lower cost of funds. So I just wanted to point that out in the context of non-city, non-Waco taxpayer funding on some of these projects.
I may be looping around to that one in a minute.
Oh, really? I saw you going. I thought you were going sequentially.
I'm doing a little different today. I'm going to come around in a minute on that one, but I do agree with you. It's always good to leverage resources, especially at 2%. We cannot go to market anymore to get 2%, so.
Yeah, I'll just second Councilmember Holmes, our mayor pro tem's comments there. I think that this is a great use of those federal dollars to help our seniors, so many of whom are on fixed incomes and are dealing with housing crises of their own, and our homeless veterans to serve their needs, also to renovate our beautiful VA Doris Miller Hospital out there, and to solidify our relationship with the VA. I think this is a win all the way around, so looking forward to voting in favor of these.
Resolution 592 is my next update. It's a professional services agreement for the 25th Street Corridor Plan. This is covered in this morning's Waco Tribune. Appreciate their coverage of this. It's a resolution that approves a professional services agreement with Kim Lee Horn and Associates for up to $254,000 to prepare a corridor implementation plan, which would design conceptually the streetscape, pedestrian mobility, and parking along 25th Street from Franklin to Maple Street. This work is—oh, thanks for the map there. It's area outlined in red, predominantly, I think, District 4, I believe, probably some pieces of others as well. Y'all know that way better than I do, though. This work, though, builds on a recent assessment by Grassroots Community Development, has done a great job in the corridor, did a study in early 2022, really visiting with businesses, and really called for the future study of the cultural identity of the corridor, as well as trying to solve parking availability issues and supporting local businesses and infrastructure improvements. We did include that assessment in the agenda packet, if anybody's interested. I thought it was really, really great work. In terms of the implementation, staff from our planning department will lead this initiative, but we are going to be well supported by the team at Grassroots, as well as Hispanic Chamber has offered their assistance, and we have a number of business owners, many of whom are Spanish-only speakers in the corridor, that we feel confident that we'll be able to engage and get feedback from and help guide the corridor work.
Yeah, Bradley, I appreciate you calling this out. I think that this is something that, at least to my knowledge, the last several council members that have sat in this seat, the District 4 seat, have been passionate about it, have been hearing from the community on it. That is to include our current mayor, who I know was speaking about this when he was in this seat. So it's really awesome to see real effort and money being put behind it. You know, it's a hair over a quarter million dollars that we're spending for this implementation plan, and I think that that shows a real effort to move forward with this. And with that, I would say that, you know, being that it's been, you know, five, six, seven, eight years, that we've been hearing this from that corridor that is such a vital part of the North Waco community. It's kind of like a welcoming gate as you're crossing over Waco Drive on 25th Street. I think that it is really vitally important that we aren't spinning our wheels on this, that, you know, that we're not spending money for a study, to have a study, to have a study, and that this implementation plan does lead to actionable implementation. I'm, you know, happy to be sitting here and pledge to make sure that I do my part to make sure that's the case, but want to voice that from up here to you and city staff as well, and I'm sure you guys are going to do the same.
Yeah, no surprise after that intro. Thank you, Darius. I'm really pleased to see this coming before us. This is a really unique corridor with some density and really strong businesses, and Darius mentioned the price tag, but I believe that's going to produce an ROI to our tax base, both in property and sales tax revenue, by really investing in the business that's in this corridor. This is just truly one of those pockets that is like, just a real local, homegrown, small-business community that is fun and has high-quality product that I'd encourage anyone to check out now, but especially, I think, when we're done with this. And I do think that there's going to—it's going to be—for this to work well, it's going to be a community effort, and it's going to take all of our chambers of commerce, it's going to take City Center Waco, it's going to take our city departments, because there's a lot of different moving parts here. It's not ours only to bear. It's going to take—but for this to be a vibrant community, this is a positive first step, and I'm really appreciative that the city's taking on the funding mechanism to fund this, and look forward to seeing the outcomes that we can all come together to achieve, like Darius mentioned.
Well said. Next highlight is Resolution 593. Wanted to recognize this one. It involves Huck International, Inc. This resolution nominates Huck, a local company that's been in Waco quite a long time, more than four decades, I believe. Do we have Huck in the room? Are you all from Huck? Hey, thanks for being here. Am I right, four decades or more, something like that?
Yeah.
Yeah, good deal. We're nominating Huck International as an enterprise project to the Office of the Governor, Texas Enterprise Zone Program. Approved enterprise projects are eligible to apply for state sales tax—sales and use tax refunds on qualified expenditures over a five-year period. As the governing body, the city of Waco provides the nomination of the enterprise project to the Office of the Governor for consideration of those state refunds. So this is, again, to Councilmember Holmes's point, dollars that aren't local dollars. These are actually state dollars that'll flow back to Huck. Over the next five years, Huck does anticipate investing about $20 million in new machinery and equipment, software upgrades, and facility improvements to increase their reliability and capacity at their Waco facility. And that'll result in not only maintaining the 478 positions they have at the plant, but also creating 17 new full-time jobs, which allows them to benefit under the Enterprise Zone Program. So pleased to be bringing this item forward and pleased for the future involvement of Huck in our community on STEM initiatives. I saw the letter in the packet and real excited to coordinate on that in the future.
You know, they're speaking my love language at that point. You're—this is a great opportunity to lift up our local businesses. However, that—you are committed to advancing the future of our workforce is pivotal right now in our community. We are—and have been a city that continues to play above our weight, but we can't do that if we're not building and bringing along our future. So we look forward to working with you in advancing STEM initiatives and STEAM initiatives in the city of Waco.
All right. And the last resolution I want to highlight is Resolution 594. This resolution approves $150,000 agreement with Armor Up America for a one-year contract with four renewal options to provide a crisis intervention program for city employees and their dependents. We mentioned this at the budget presentation a couple of meetings ago. I think Deputy City Manager Emerson covered it well at that meeting, but this service that we're contracting for really expands beyond the traditional employee assistance program by providing 24/7 confidential crisis hotline, mobile app, in addition to mental health, financial, and peer support training. This is a first-in-class benefit that we are attempting to add on top of our existing employee assistance program, and it'll allow us to respond to real-time crises for city staff and their family members. Typically, this benefit is directed specifically towards public safety employees, and to our knowledge, the city of Waco will be the first known citywide user of a program like this. Excited to bring this forward today and provide this asset to our team. And finally, Mayor and council, I won't call out these—
I'm going to comment on this really quick, Bradley. I think that this is really cool that we're doing this. I think that there's been time—we've had—I've heard of times where this was actually a tool that we needed, and now to be able to have it, given the gravity of a lot of the work that our city does, it's really great. So thank you for doing that.
I wanted to highlight kind of a collection of resolutions here at the end that further our efforts towards increased sustainability within our city operations, including the application to the Lone Star Program, the revolving loan program that Councilmember Holmes mentioned earlier, as well as purchase of electric transport vehicles at the Cameron Park Zoo. Those very easily could have been gas-powered, as well as the purchase of a hybrid police interceptor unit. You do see a number of traditional vehicle and equipment purchases on our agenda today, but I do want to say a special thanks to the staff and council for, you know, the measured approach we're taking to add alternative fuel vehicles where feasible to our fleet. In terms of ordinances today, we have nine. All are on second reading except for ordinance 618, a first reading that approves a boundary agreement with the city of McGregor.
Are you going to say something? Sorry.
Bradley, I appreciate that—the efforts that we're intentionally setting forth to advance sustainability in our community. This has not been a long-time game that this council has been playing, yet I think we've been consistent in year-over-year what we do. I know that there are some—we have citizens that don't believe we're moving fast enough, but I think we're moving at the rate that makes sense for Waco, and we are committed to going further, to finding cost-effective ways to make this stuff happen, seeking alternative funding for those kinds of things that we deem important, that will be important for the longevity of our communities. But we have to do it in a way that makes sense and in a way that is actually available for our community. So I applaud staff's efforts. I know this isn't easy, and we're not going to stop asking you to find alternative ways to make a greater impact on our carbon footprint as a city, but I appreciate the fact that you all don't push back on that and try—and give as much as you can and as much as we can, you know, we can as a city, to get it—get us further and further each year. So thank you.
Mayor, that concludes my report. I'll take any questions y'all might have for me or staff.
For Bradley's staff? Not the consent agenda includes Resolutions 2023, 583 through 609, and 619. There are—are there any items council would like to remove from the consent agenda? And the consent agenda will include the resolutions I just stated. The next item is on the agenda is work session, item 2023, 576 through 578. Bradley, would you please introduce the first work session?
Sure. Our first work session is a discussion of the 88th Legislative Regular Session and the called Special Sessions. I'm going to invite Ashley Neistrum, my chief of staff, as well as Ken Neely, our Legislative Affairs Manager, to the table to discuss this item. And if y'all—if Ken Neely is not familiar to those in the audience, he is relatively new. He joined us just before the session, and I look forward to his first presentation today. I'll turn it over to y'all.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, I am happy to have this opportunity to present a summary of the 88th Legislative Session and its ongoing activities. Good afternoon. legislative dates of interest. These dates are important because they help shape the structure of the legislative session. Tuesday, January 10th, the 88th Legislature convened. Friday, September 17th, the deadline—that was the deadline for requesting the drafting of non-local bills. March 10th was the 60-day bill filing deadline. Monday, May 29th, the legislative session adjourned, signed it, died. Sunday, June 18th, was the 20-day deadline for the governor to sign or veto legislation. Again, these dates are important because they lay out the framework of activity for the legislative session. There were two special sessions. The first special session was called on Monday, May 29th. It ended June 27th. Rather quickly, the second special session was Tuesday, June 27th, which ended on July 13th. The legislative session was—I would characterize it as somewhat fast and somewhat furious. We only have 120 days in session to consider bills, and so needless to say, there was a lot of activity within that period of time, within those 30, 60, 90 days. And so in partnering with the Texas Municipal League, with Black Ridge, with other departments, we were able to engage the legislature and act on behalf of the city of Waco. TML is very well-known, the Texas Municipal League, Black Ridge as well, our state lobbying firm, as well as other departmental groups. Now, phonetically, this looks like Taco to me, but I understand that it's TEKO, the Texas Association of City and County Health Officials. Very strong organization advocating on behalf of different health organizations, city and county organizations. We had an opportunity to also meet with different legislators and their staff, Senator Birdwell and his staff, Representative Charles Doc Anderson and his staff, Representative Angelia Orr, along with House and Senate committee staff, as well as the Legislative Budget Board staff, the LBB. We were very fortunate in being able to develop strong partnerships and working relationships with these members, as well as their staff. In engaging the legislature, we used several tools. Committee testimony. The city manager had an opportunity to testify before the Senate Natural Resources and Economic Development Committee in support of legislation, particularly Senate Bill 1167, which was QHP for Waco, Qualified Hotel Project Status, authored by Senator Birdwell. We also had an opportunity to write testimony in support and opposition to different pieces of legislation, this one particularly to House Bill 2827, the dairy bill. Now, pursuant to the Texas Constitution, committees can begin considering legislation after the first 30 days of the session, starting on February 9th. And so we had an opportunity to attend hearings and register the city's position on different pieces of legislation as of February 9th. We also had an opportunity to write letters. The mayor wrote several letters to members in support and opposition to different pieces of legislation. In particular, the mayor's letter to the House State Affairs— to different pieces of legislation. In particular, the mayor's letter to the House State Affairs Committee and members in opposition to House Bill 2127, the big preemption bill outlining its impact on the city of Waco. Also, the mayor's letter to the State Affairs Committee in opposition to Senate Bill 175, its companion bill, House Bill 3538 prohibiting taxpayer-funded lobbying. Also, the mayor's letter to the House State Affairs Committee in support of House Bill 3447, which establishes the Texas State Commission. And then, a number of letters on different issues, both in opposition and support of different pieces of legislation. A number of letters in opposition to House Bill 2827, the dairy bill. Let me also recognize our wonderful partner with the Greater Waco Chamber of Commerce in helping to organize Waco Day in Austin at the state Capitol. We had an opportunity to meet with the governor's office, particularly the economic development team, the Texas Workforce Commission, the Texas Education Agency, Texas Higher Education Coordinating Board, Department of Transportation, Texas Water Development Board, Senator Birdwell and his staff, and Representative Anderson. These are all very important meetings, helping us to do what we do on behalf of the city. Very effective engagement on behalf of the city, and we're very grateful to the chamber for putting this together for us. When we look at a summary of the legislative session, this was certainly a record-breaking session in that for the 88th Legislature, there were 8,344 bills that were filed. Compared to the 87th, 86th, and 85th Legislative Sessions, this was a record-breaking session, 8,344 pieces of legislation filed by members. 1,259 of these bills passed, and 76 of these bills were vetoed by the governor. When you look at the nature of this session, the House filed more than twice as many bills as the Senate. The House passed 63% of bills sent to them by the Senate. The Senate passed 48% of bills sent to them by the House. This shows the activity between the House and the Senate and working together here in the state of Texas to pass legislation. Once again, this was quite a session in that it started with a $33 billion budget surplus, filed a number of record, filed a record number of bills, removed one of its members from office, impeached the sitting Attorney General, and had the two special sessions thus far, with a third special session promised on the way. The governor, along with both chambers of commerce at the beginning of the session, laid out their priorities. The priorities of the governor are important. One, because the governor cannot actually introduce legislation. Only members of the House and members of the Senate can introduce legislation. However, the governor can impact legislation in being able to lay out his priorities at the beginning of the session, as well as deeming several of his priorities emergency items. During the State of the State Address in September, I'm sorry, in February, Governor Abbott laid out seven emergency items. Why do these emergency items matter? Because according to the Texas State Constitution, the House and Senate cannot pass legislation during the first 60 days of a regular session, which this year started on January 10th. There are only two exceptions: when four-fifths of either chamber votes to suspend that rule, or if the governor declares the matter an emergency. Because these were considered emergency items, members could immediately vote on these particular areas, these particular issues. Legislation introduced covering these particular issues: providing property tax relief, ending COVID restrictions forever, as the governor put it, expanding school choice, school safety, ending the revolving door on bail policies, border security, and the prosecution of fentanyl deaths. These were the seven emergency items outlined by the governor at the beginning of the legislative session. Likewise, the lieutenant governor has his priorities. There were over 30 priorities that the governor or that the lieutenant governor laid out at the beginning of the session. These are an example of several of the priorities that the lieutenant governor laid out, including increasing the homestead exemption from 40,000 to 70,000. Of course, that bill failed thus the first special, second special session, and the second special session. Senate Bill 4, additional school property tax relief, as well as addressing Texas's future water needs, and then ending COVID mandates. The lieutenant governor laid these out at the very beginning of the session. Thus, we saw legislation to these particular issues. The House Speaker, Dave Phelan, had his priority bills as well in the area of property tax relief, school safety, economic development, broadband funding, and developing plans for plans and plating. These, of course, you saw legislation to that effect on each of these issues. Now, allow me to move to the city of Waco. At the end of the regular session, the legislature sent a total of 1,258 bills and joint resolutions to the governor for his signature. There were about 230 bills that were passed that affected cities, 230 bills that affected cities. And these bills are ranging from property taxes and public safety to transportation and the municipal courts. Now, let me point out three bills in particular of these 230, if you will, that I want to discuss for this particular session. House Bill 5012, which was the QHP bill for Waco Qualified Hotel Project Status, the omnibus bill. House Bill 2127 and its companion bill, Senate Bill 814, the big preemption bill. We call it the, well, others call it the Death Star Bill. House Bill 2827, the dairy bill. The actual name of the dairy bill, we call it the Dairy Bill. It's relating to the permitting of and performance of annual soil tests for certain concentrated animal feeding operations by the Texas Commission on Environmental Quality. Major bill that had major impacts on the city of Waco that we were actually able to defeat. Let's turn to QHP for Waco. The Qualified Hotel Program, for those of you who may not know, provides for use of state and local tax dollars to leverage private investment and receive long-term benefits of attracting large capital investments, increasing tourism, and creating jobs. This fortunately was filed without the governor's signature. It's effective September 1st. It's a major win for the city of Waco. Let me thank Mr. Dan Quaint as well, who's the Director of Tourism and Conventions. Did I say that correctly? Conventions and tourism for the city of Waco. Very grateful for his activity in helping monitor this bill and get it passed. These were the original bills that were filed in the House and the Senate that were eventually rolled into House Bill 5012, the omnibus QHP bill. As you can imagine, the legislative process is a lot like making sausage. You grind it all up, and whatever comes out, comes out, and hopefully, it's good. Well, fortunately for us, House Bill 5012 included QHP for the city of Waco. Another bill that I want to point out, House Bill 2127, which was the preemption bill, the companion bill, the Senate Bill 814 in the Senate. This bill is problematic for the city in that it expressly preempts certain home-rule city regulations. It potentially preempts other home-rule city regulations in fields occupied by state statute and particular codes, depending on how the courts rule. There are a number of areas that this touches: the agriculture code, business and commerce code, finance code, the insurance code, the labor code, the natural resources code, the occupations code, and the property code. And this is problematic. One, there are a number of questions that have yet to be answered, including when does a state statute occupy a field of regulation? We don't know. We do anticipate litigation on this matter. I understand the city of Houston has filed suit in suing the state of Texas, as well as others. Unfortunately, this bill passed, and we will continue to monitor this legislation as it moves through the legal process. Allow me, if you will, to turn it over to Ashley Neistrum, my very capable Chief of Staff, to talk about House Bill 2827, the dairy bill.
Thank you, Ken. Mayor and Council, good afternoon. I'd just like to say thank you. I'm glad to have Ken on board. In past years, you know, I was the one giving this presentation, and it's nice to not be the only one headed down to Austin as a staff member. But I, if you'll permit me, I'll just take a couple of minutes to speak to House Bill 2827, the dairy bill. This was a bill that was carried in the House by Representative Dwayne Burns on behalf of the Texas Association of Dairymen. Representative Burns, while he doesn't officially represent technically any of the dairies within the geographical area of this bill, he does serve as the Chair of the House Committee on Agriculture and Livestock, which is where the Association of Dairymen founded a friendly ear for this issue. Now, this bill specifically targeted legislation from 2001 that Waco successfully sought at that time to protect the North Boski River watershed, which is the primary water supply to Lake Waco, and thus is our primary drinking water resource. I won't go into, for the sake of time, all the details and ramifications of this bill, but for, for a quick history, for anyone who wasn't living in or working or visiting Waco in the late 90s and early 2000s, we had a significant taste and odor issue. That was largely due to the nutrient pollution in the upper reaches of our watershed, and that we successfully addressed with some of these stricter environmental permitting structures enacted by that legislation. You can see here on the right side of your slide, some of the editorial cartoons from 2001 when we were in the thick of this legislative battle. This was not a legislative issue that we anticipated heading into session, but it did quickly become our top legislative priority. We worked diligently on this bill throughout April and into May. As Ken mentioned, we attended several hearings, provided testimony, and actively engaged with our elected state officials, in addition to direct engagement with Representative Burns and his team. The bill did pass out of the House, but ultimately, it died in the Senate for lack of a committee So, what this legislation proposed to do would have drastically changed the existing environmental permitting structure within our watershed. This graphic or map on the left outlines the watershed that feeds into Lake Waco. The loosening of those restrictions would have come with negative impacts, not only to us as downstream water users, but to all neighboring property owners within that watershed. What this map highlights is a represent, a heat map of the notices of violation that dairy operators have received within the watershed since 2016. And you can see the stars represent some currently active notices of violation. So, the narrative that was told during the session was that the program has been a success, and there are no longer problems within the watershed. But the story that we told was a little bit different. There are still issues with the river, with the pollution upstream, and we couldn't support just a blanket removal of those restrictions. I would like to take a moment, if you'll permit me, to thank those who engaged and assisted us on this bill. Of course, we'd want to thank our state officials. Representative Anderson carried Waco's opposition in the House, and Senator Birdwell was a key player for us on this bill. He quickly grasped the magnitude of the issue and its impacts. This area, the entire watershed, falls within his Senate district. So, he was a big support to us on this issue. Mayor Meek, actively engaged. Thank you for your dedicated involvement and advocacy, traveling down to the Capitol, a number of phone calls and meetings throughout that time period. City Council as well engaged with us on advocacy efforts, and I can't thank you all enough. City Manager Ford and Assistant City Manager Kane engaged directly with Representative Burns, the bill author, as well as with the Texas Association of Dairymen, who we have relationships with through the Boski River Coalition and different stakeholder groups. So, those conversations were pivotal as well as we sought to seek some workable solutions. We were supported by a number of city staff within our water utilities team, looking at the data, looking at the permitting history within the watershed. And I would be remiss if I didn't mention the contributions of Wiley STEM, our former city manager, who was involved in this issue as we created the legislation and worked on the pollution issues throughout the 90s and early 2000s. And he really carried the history to this issue and involved property owners and stakeholders throughout the watershed as this issue came back to us.
Ashley, I want to add, I'm sorry, are you still giving kudos?
I'm still going--
Continue. I don't want to stop it. I don't want to stop that train.
Jacob Hogan at the Greater Waco Chamber and the Public Policy Group over there contributed with advocacy efforts, petitions, really involving the Waco community as a whole, business owners and stakeholders, as we looked to the economic development impacts to all water users in our region. And then, finally, I'd also like to thank our local media, who provided extensive coverage and highlighted the issue here in Waco. Channel 10 in particular did a very well-researched story, and of course, J.B. Smith at the Waco Tribune-Herald, who covered this issue when he first started at the trib in the late 90s, brought his insight and well-researched articles to bear on the issue again. And I'm sure there are people I'd miss, and I would welcome any other additional people who contributed on this issue.
Ashley, I thought you did a great job there, giving credit to where credit is due in this. And I think that for those of us who recall the taste and the quality of Waco's water, like you said, in the late 90s, early 2000s versus what it is now, I mean, to me, this was a red alert, all-hands-on-deck situation that affects our quality of life. And I know our mayor, our city manager, and so many of our community partners showed incredible courage and leadership in getting this thing squashed in the Senate. And so, I'm grateful for city staff. I'm grateful for our mayor and council members in rallying the troops on this community-wide, because any effort like this is going to be met with very strong opposition going forward. I don't think we're going to give any quarter on this if they try to revive something like this. But grateful for all of y'all who fought the good fight on this and won.
Very well said. Thank you, council member. And that just leads me to my last point on the bill. You know, as we talked with the bill author and stakeholders throughout the legislative session, we did try to seek workable solutions, and we just, we couldn't get there with the bill as it was written. But we did commit to continue working with the Texas Association of Dairymen, with the Boski River Coalition, with stakeholders throughout the region, to continue to look at the permitting structure as a whole, the Total Maximum Daily Load Program, which is the state's program that looks at phosphorus pollution in the river. Those meetings have been ongoing over the last decade, and we committed to continuing those meetings and continuing those conversations so we can continue to tweak that program. But again, we couldn't support the legislation as it was brought.
Holmes here again. Ashley, thanks for the summary of that. And yeah, I appreciate everybody's work on that. And yeah, I appreciate everybody's work on that, on that too, on getting this thing killed. Is there anything, I know we only meet, they only meet every two years, so we'll probably forget about this and then think about it again in 2025, I guess.
We should not.
Yeah, no, we shouldn't exactly. My point is going to be, is there anything for us to be proactive from a community level? And as you pointed out, some of them attending the meetings, and I don't know if we need to get with State Representative Burns.
I'll jump in here. I can, I'll happily catch you up, council member. But we are taking steps and proactively, strategically, to ensure that we move forward appropriately on this, and I can catch you up on that later.
Yep. Thank you. Are there any other questions on this particular bill?
I'll just jump in, and I just want to echo some support. Thanks to our council, obviously, for being a united team on this and to our staff. Bradley and Jen, and Ken and Ashley, great work. Ashley, phenomenal subject matter expert on this, went incredibly deep to know the state of affairs, really, really well done. And I appreciate Carol at Blackridge, who also provided strategic support on this. You mentioned Wiley, but man, he loves this town and stepped in in a really meaningful way. I loved seeing our community really rally together. It was so easy to get people to throw signatures on letters and be willing to testify and stand up. And I think if it would have come to a Senate hearing, we would have loaded up buses and gone down to Austin to make our voices be heard in a way that would have been meaningful. And so really felt supported by our community. You mentioned it, Ashley, but really appreciate Senator Birdwell really standing in the gap for us on this one. We couldn't have done this without him. It was really, I'll say it, you didn't. It was disappointing to me that our representative Angela Orr voted for this. Her district includes not only Waco, but also Clifton and other communities whose water supply would have been impacted by this. And without a heads up to me or any of those others advocating against this, voted in favor of it, and I hope that the voters remember that when it's time to vote for her reelection. I think that, for me, I think there's a lot of lessons that I learned through this process, but I will not be in this seat or others in the future. And so my hope is that we'll think through some of the lessons we learned. And for me, some of that is really making sure that our lobbyist firm and others are elevating these matters as soon as possible. And as Councilmember Holmes mentioned, we're taking steps moving forward, and I know that we are. I know that there's staff is in process to really take steps on this specific issue, but others, you know. But the part about the legislature is it throws curveballs at you, and you can be as prepared as you want to be and believe you're prepared as we could be. And the curveballs get thrown at us, and I was really impressed why Ashley and Ken and the rest of our team were really stepping up and providing a strategic response to that moment. And so, you know, to the point of moving forward, like, I agree with looking at how to sit down and come to the table with these guys, but I don't want to give, I do not want to compromise that is going to have any risk to impacting our water supply. And that, you know, my hope is that if there's unreasonable components of the law that have no risk to the water supply, we'll evaluate those. But if there's anything that could even, in the name of compromise, put the water supply in jeopardy, we shouldn't move on it. And I believe that we'll have the support of the legislature going into the next session.
Mayor, I remember our first fight. I was on the council on our first fight. And as council members, we all went down to where the dairy farms are, and we talked to each individual dairy farmer. We made contact with them and let them know what we, as council member, why we were doing, what we were doing. And I thought the fight was over, but apparently we're always going to be fighting this every so many years. But it's awesome that our team has gotten together, along with you, Mayor, and going to fight the fight again. So I'm looking forward to another fight. Hopefully, I'll be somewhere around, not here maybe, but the water back then was really, it was, I mean, it was bad. It was really bad. And the council at that time decided, we need to go and share with the dairy farmers why we are fighting for this particular action. And we did. And Cullen Smith got a bus for us, and we all went down there together. So it was a joint effort back then, and it's a joint effort now. So I'm sure in the future, if it arises again, it'll be a joint effort as well. Thank you to staff for doing what we had to do, Bradley, and everybody else that joined in, the chambers, and everybody else that joined in. So thank you again for all of that.
Thank you. Thank you, guys. The, thank you for that note. On the impeachment of Attorney General Paxton, I'll simply say that the House voted to bring impeachment charges. There were 20 articles of impeachment. Paxton was subsequently suspended, and a trial in the Senate is expected to begin on Tuesday, September the 5th. We've had two special sessions. The first special session was on, well, began on May 29th and ended on June 27th. The focus, property taxes and border security, of the seven emergency items prescribed by the governor. The House passed their version of property tax relief and quickly adjourned Sinai Dae, leaving the Senate to act. The Senate gavelled in on June 6th to advance their version, however, calling for the need for a second special session, which began on June 27th and ended on July 13th. After passing a property tax agreement that encompassed over $12 billion in state funding to reduce property tax rates, $100,000 homestead exemption for school property taxes, a 20% circuit breaker, and then savings on the franchise tax for small businesses, these are all elements of what was passed during the special, during the second special session of this legislature. That concludes our summary of the 88th Texas Legislature.
Thank you, guys, so much. We really appreciate your work and this presentation.
Mayor and Council are next. Two work sessions are going to be led by Nick Sarpe, our Finance Director. I'm going to go ahead and call both of them. It's a work session 577, which is a discussion of our third quarter financial and investment reports, to be followed by 578, which is a discussion of the city manager's fiscal year 2324 budget, including a whole lot of slides on the city's debt profile, which I know Councilmember Holmes is looking forward to.
That's great.
Nick's joined at the table by Assistant City Manager Paul Kane as well. Nick?
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council.
Good afternoon.
So as Bradley mentioned, we're going to go through the third quarter financial report, which is also the June financial report first. All right. So the third quarter financial report presents unaudited financial information as well as non-financial information. That is the most up-to-date information we have, and compares the information to prior years, and as well as includes projections for each of the funds. So the first fund, general fund. So revenues for the general fund were budgeted at $175.1 million for the fiscal year 23 budget. So far this year, through the end of the third quarter, we've brought in $163.9 million with three months to go. So we're looking like, and we're projecting to exceed budget for this year. Expenditures for the general fund are up to $191.5 million. And so far, expenses, which include encumbrances, which is purchase orders, is about $139 million. So revenues this year are higher, a result of increased property taxes, sales tax, as well as interest income. And that's primarily related to the change in market values, as well as rising interest rates. And then expenses are $12.9 million higher because of the encumbrances, as well as increased personnel costs as a result of added staff, as well as the salary increases that were put into place for fiscal year 23. So for this quarter, we decided to switch up our projection slide to talk about some of the key trends for each of the funds that we're seeing, as opposed to the small chart with very small words that couldn't be read easily. So for 23, we're projecting revenues for the general fund to be at about 110% of budget, primarily as a result of sales tax, some grant revenues that weren't budgeted for, as we're slowly receiving funding related to the Winter Stone Arm, as well as the COVID response from the state, as well as licenses and interest revenue. On the expense side, we're projecting expenses to be under budget at about 98%, and that's primarily because of lower salary benefits, because of vacancies we're seeing throughout the fund. All right, the water fund. So so far through the third quarter, we've received revenues of about $44.9 million. And the final fourth quarter of the year is the biggest quarter of the year for the water fund, since that's the summer quarter. So far, revenues are $3.2 million more than the prior year. On the expense side, expenses totaled $51.3 million through the quarter, and they're 6.3 more than last year, primarily a result of the transfers out for capital and operational or debt service activities, as well as supply costs, which we've seen increase significantly. So on this slide, you'll see one of the key trends that'll flow for some of the other funds that follow wastewater and WMARS. You'll see that rainfall totals this year are significantly higher than last year, and those contribute to other factors that come into play for other funds. Charges for services and revenue for the water fund, we're projecting overall revenues for the water fund to be at 105% of budget, primarily as a result of increased charges for service from increased demand, as well as from interest on investments, which is a trend that you'll see pretty much for every fund. Expenses are projected to be right under budget. The water department as a whole does a really good job of managing within their adopted budget, and primarily the expectations for under budget is related to salaries and benefits. Wastewater, the fund budgeted revenues are $41.3 million for 23, and so far, $33.2 million has been generated through the third quarter, and they're 2.1 million more than last year. On the expense side, the expense side budget is at $44.4 million, and so we're at $32.6 as far as expenses and encumbrances year-to-date. A little bit more, 4.5 million more than last year, related to professional services and then the flows, which is the other expense category. And that's, those are payments that the wastewater fund makes to WMARS. So on the wastewater side, we're projecting revenues to be at 108% of budget, primarily from charges for service. On the expense side, we expect expenses to be under budget at 94.5% of budget, primarily related to salaries and benefits. WMARS, so revenues through the third quarter totaled $12.7 million, and revenues are $3.0 million higher this year because of the wetter year and from charges for service. Expenses are $11 million through the quarter and 2.7 million higher this year due to increased supply costs and capital expenditures. All right, on this slide, you'll see the monthly wastewater flows between the two plants. So the blue is from the central plant, and the red is bullhide. So you can see most of the flows go through our central plant. For this fund, we're projecting revenues to be at 112% of budget, primarily from charges for service. And on the expense side, the same story as the other funds. It's expected to be below budget, primarily from salaries and benefits. Solid Waste Fund, Solid Waste has collected revenues of $24.7 million so far through the year, which is 4.7 million more than through last year, as a result of increased rates, as well as increased activity at the landfill, significantly increased revenues at the landfill. Expenses are $21 million through the quarter, and they're higher by $5 million related to capital expenditures and for professional services. So on this slide, you'll see the chart showing the comparison of the different divisions for solid waste comparative to the year-to-date actuals, comparing the monthly budget to year-to-date actuals. And you'll see on this slide that the landfill is $3.2 million higher than the monthly budget, which is why for solid waste, we're projecting revenues to be 121% of budget. On the expense side, we're projecting expenses to be about 97% of budget. The airport fund, we've collected $2.3 million, and they're about $14,000 higher this year than last year. And this one is a result of the interest on investments that we've seen. Expenses are $3 million through the quarter, and they're 626,000 higher so far this year. So on the airport side, we're projecting revenues to be about 105% of budget. And on the expense side, we're projecting, at the point of when we were preparing the report, we're projecting them to be about 105% of budget. And that was as a result of increased professional service costs. And then on the last council meeting, council approved a change order related to the terminal monetization project for $883,000. And then on the agenda tonight, there's a couple of additional items related to the airport totaling about $48,000. So when you factor those in, we're projecting expenses from the current budget would be about 132% of the budget, and this would generate a cost recovery for the airport of about 65%. On the convention center side, so through the third quarter, convention centers already exceeded budget. It's collected $6.6 million compared to the budget for 23 of 6.4 million. And this is primarily related to hotel motel tax revenues exceeding last year by 445,000. On the expense side, expenses totaled 5.5 million through the quarter and are higher So for the convention services fund, we're projecting revenues to be about 145% of budget, primarily from hot taxes being stronger than budgeted, as well as increased revenue from charges for service and convention activity that they're holding here. On the expense side, we're projecting them to be about 96% of budget, primarily due to vacancies from the fund. And so for this fund, the cost recovery would be about 128%. So the Ranger Hall of Fame, which is probably the most consistent fund we have, revenues are totaling about $1.6 million through the quarter, and they're higher due to increased transfers in from the general fund this year, in part because of planned capital expenditures related to the roof replacement and fixing, as well as a NOx step. Expenses total 1.3 million through the quarter, and it's a nearly $205,000 increase this year over last year due to professional services. So for the Ranger, we're projecting revenues to be about 106% of budget, primarily from increased merchandise sales. Expenses are projected to be about 96% of the budget due to vacancies in the fund, as well as purchased property services, which is like utilities and those types of activities, to be about 80%. So the cost recovery for the Ranger Hall of Fame is about 39%. The Cameron Park Zoo, so revenues through the quarter totaled $4.6 million. Year-over-year, revenues are down over $67,000 due to last merchandise sales. Year-over-year revenues are down over $67,000 due to last merchandise sales. Expenses total 6.4 million so far through the third quarter, and this is a $1.9 million increase as a result of capital expenditures related to the aviary netting and personnel cost increases.
Any reason why there's a, why that loss in merchandise sale?
As we can tell, part of it has to do with, there's a variety of factors. The changeover to the coffee shop was one of the big things that they've been doing this last year, as well as there's been adjustment to some margins that they've been doing at the zoo in order to help them get rid of inventory, and so that's contributed to that as well. All right, so revenues are projected to be at 117% of budget. This factors in a $1.6 million additional transfer from the general fund to cover the cost of increased water and sewer charges at the zoo related to the installation of new meters at the zoo. At the source of where the water comes into the zoo, the meters read better or more accurate than the previous meters and show the true picture of the water usage at the zoo, which previously was not necessarily the case. For the zoo, charges for services are projected to be about 92% of budget, and then network merchandise sales are projected to be about 71%. And so following that same trend on the water side, water and sewer charges side, expenses are projected to be about 110% of budget because of those increased charges. And so for the zoo, the cost recovery is projected to be around 45%. All right, drainage, the budget was set at $7.4 million based on the assumption that we would be billing for 114,000 equivalent residential units. So far, revenues through the third quarter total 4.9 million, so they're about $89,000 more than last year, in part from improved billing, but also from the 10% increase in the rates. On the expense side, the pulp works and drainage division have done a really good job of managing their expenses in line with their revenues. So they've totaled $4.7 million through the quarter, and they're 2.5 million more than last year due to capital expenditures, professional services, and this being the second year of the fund. So on this slide, you'll see the comparison of what we've been billing on a monthly basis to the budget, which is the 114, which is the red line, as we continue to work on improving the budget. And you'll see dramatic improvements if you look from October through June. We've increased the number of ERUs that have been built by 17,000 each month. So revenues are projected to be about 90% of budget, since we aren't billing quite at what we budgeted based off of for the drainage fund. On the flip side, expenses are projected to be about 81% as the department and the division manage and control their costs accordingly. So overall, cost recovery is projected to be about 105% for the fund. Transit, so revenues total about $6.5 million for the transit fund through the third quarter. They're $1.3 million higher compared to last year due to grants that the transit fund has received. Expenses total 6.9 million, and they're about 1.7 million higher this year compared to last year related to capital expenditures. All right, on this slide, you'll see the ridership trend for the transit system. So for this year, we're projecting revenues to be at about, even with budget, primarily from intergovernmental revenues. Expenses are projected to be about 96% of budget from vacancies within the operations as well as reduced supply and maintenance costs. Revenues are projected to be, our revenues through the quarter are 2.5 million, which is about 83% of the budget, and they're 330,000 more than last year from operations. Expenses for the Cottonwood Creek total $2.3 million, and they're about 625 more than last year due to encumbrances for temporary services. So on the Cottonwood Creek side, we're projecting revenues to be about 111% of budget, with charges for services making up the bulk of that delta between budget and expectations due to the number of rounds that have been played, which have been the most that Cottonwood has seen. In addition, because of the additional rounds, network sales are projected to be above budget at 105%. On the flip side, expenses are projected to be about 107% of budget as a result of increased water charges, as a result of better and more accurate meters at the golf course as well. And so cost recovery for the golf course fund is projected to be about 90%. And so on this slide, this shows in green the funds who are projecting to see increases in their fund balance or working capital, and the red are the ones that are projecting to see declines in their working capital or fund balance. All right, and so as we're required by the Public Funds Investment Act, we wanted to give you an update on the investments of the city. So the total investment portfolio totals almost $813 million, which is a decrease of about 21 million from the prior quarter. Our unrealized loss has decreased slightly from the prior quarter from 7.2 million to 7.1 million. For the quarter, our investment income totaled 7.7 million, and our days maturity increased to 157 days from 139 days. Overall, our portfolio is yielding 3.87% compared to the 5.05% for the tax pool as of the end of June, and this is primarily related to securities that were purchased that were long-term in nature prior to the rising of interest rates. In summary, the 23 budget was set based off of the activity that was occurring during 22 as we prepared the budget. We're still seeing strong sales and hotel motel tax revenues. However, the growth in these, in these areas are not necessarily exceeding the rate of inflation each month, and most operations are in line with budget expectations through the quarter. Any questions?
Any questions for Nick or comments?
Great report, Nick, as always, and I love this format that we've kind of, it's evolved here. I guess I mention this every quarter, but it looks good. I like it. You show the year-over-year data, year-to-date, and you show the budget year-to-date and how we're doing on those measurements, and it's just so pleasing to look at it and see that this quarter in particular, it seems like everything's right on, right on budget. I didn't see anything that was out of line or behind or ahead particularly, and that is hard to do, and I'll commend staff on this too. It's hard to do in an inflation environment where we're trying to project costs and revenues that we did over a year ago now. So it looks like everything's going right according to plan. The, in general, the three parts that I always look at, the general, the utility funds, which water, wastewater, WMRs, solid waste and drainage, and then the amenity funds, airport, convention center, Ranger Hall of Fame, zoo, and cottonwood golf. First of all, the general, the one trend that I see that is good is the sales tax is still strong. The trends are way above budget in sales tax. I just hope that continues. I know that we were a little more aggressive in our 2024 budget, and I hope the trend continues because I know that I've been advocating we should be more aggressive, but so that's, that came, that's coming in very well, and I hope we, that that trend continues. The utilities, everything right in line too. It always, in the third quarter of every year, I always worry about the water revenue because it's the July, August, September period where the most of the revenue is, and I know that citizens have been conscious of trying to conserve, conserve water and will continue to be. So I want to, we'll be watching that one close here in the, in the fourth quarter on how the, the water utility fund plays out. In the amenity funds, and again, this was kind of hard post-COVID to predict how, and again, I want to commend you, Nick, on some of the supporting data you have kind of brings the, the charts to life where you have the rainfall total and the attendance totals and the, and the gallons totals and the arrivals and departures totals. It kind of, when you see that, you can see why we're okay or why we're not okay. We're running behind your head. So particularly in these amenity funds, where we're seeing the 2019, that trend pre-COVID was pretty strong, and it's taken a couple of years just to get back to where we need to be. We're still not backing some of those. So that data, I like to keep a close eye on that too, but to me, third quarter looked very strong, right on budget. Year-over-year looks quite good. So great job, staff, good report, Nick.
Any questions or comments?
I'll echo what, what Councilmember Holmes said. This is really challenging work, given the breadth and the scope and the number of departments that, and funds and activity in the city, and really appreciate the, the attention to detail and diligence that's coming out of these reports. I think it will be interesting to see the impact of sales tax. I think that that's going to be something that is, is worthwhile for Councilmember Holmes to point out, but I also think that we've been in such an economic growth moment, and it'll be, it will be curious to see what the trend lines show as, if the economy slows nationally and locally. So appreciate the thoughtfulness that goes into the budgeting process certainly, and appreciate these reports. And is, are there any requests for future gen items?
Nope, we got one more.
I was pointing it up. I thought we might be done. See, you're in a pause.
That was a good try, though.
So we also wanted to give you an update on the fiscal year 23, 24 budget development. And so a lot of these slides are in response to questions that council has brought up and raised as part of this process, and in particular, this one focuses on the debt profile of the city. So this slide shows the per capita governmental activity debt, which is debt that's used to finance streets, parks, fire stations, police activity, those types of things that are supported by the tax rate on a per capita basis compared to our peer cities. So you'll see on this slide that the city of Waco is the second lowest on a per capita basis as far as outstanding debt as of the end of the fiscal year 22 year for all of these cities. So this slide shows the projection of where we project the per capita debt for the city to go over the next two years. So we're projecting 23 to be about $1,900 on a per capita basis, and in 24, based on the proposed budget, to be about $2,400. Now, this includes our debt for the TIF because on financial reporting perspective, it's considered governmental debt, and in 23 and 24 combined, the TIF has issued close to somewhere between 50 and 100 million dollars in new debt. So this shows the proposed 24 bond CO issuance based on current data and current projects that are in the proposed budget. So we'll see that the 24 proposed CO, it totals 50, a little over 50 million dollars. It includes investments in the Floyd Casey redevelopment project, as well as investments in the Spielville Road Bridge, the new road bridge, in streets, significant investments in streets as well, as well as the relocation of Fire Station 4.
Nick, could you back up a little bit? On the Floyd Casey Hart Patterson track, what is that?
That's the park.
The park?
At Floyd Casey.
But you're saying Hart Patterson Track? The track is already there, right?
Right, yeah, so it's at that location, the Floyd Casey site, the former Floyd Casey site.
I'm still not understanding.
Alice, it's the, the park, you know, the inclusive park and all of that, that's what this is.
Okay, but that's not, inclusive park is not on the track.
Well, it's that area. I think the naming is maybe.
Yeah, that, that's what.
It's for all, it's for, it's not the.
The Hart Patterson Track.
When it says, it says Floyd Casey and Hart Patterson Track redevelopment, and that, that's meant to include the entirety of the, that all of that parkland over there is included in that 12.5 million.
I knew, I knew the all-inclusive park, but the Hart Patterson Track name threw me off.
Yeah, totally answered.
Sorry.
I agree.
That was my question, Nick, thank you. The mayor answered it.
I'm assuming that's right. I knew that we're putting 12.5 million towards that, so.
I think, and that's just part.
Part of it, yeah, yeah, the first, the first tranche of it, yeah.
This, this would be your three, so we'd be up to about $26 million investment for that whole redevelop, for that whole park land area.
Thank you.
All right, so for each one of the major funds, including the tax-supported debt service, you'll see this slide, and so I'm going to just kind of walk through what each one of these mean. So the gray is the total outstanding debt service that we project at year-end for each of the funds. So that would be your principal and interest payment for the next 30 years. The orange bar is a total new debt service, and so that would be the amount from the issuance in that fiscal year over the life of those bonds. That would, that does include principal and interest as well. And then the blue, which is the small amount for this particular fund, is the actual debt service for that given year. So for fiscal year 24, our debt service is about $20.7 million. All right, and then this slide shows what the general tax-supported debt looks like over the next 30 years. The blue is the current debt service, and then the orange is what we're projecting based on the 24 proposed budget and what that debt service would look like. And then this slide shows the same information, just in gray and blue, as well as the tax rate based off of that debt service and what it looks like over the course of the next All right, on the utility side, we're projecting to issue about $116.1 million in self-supporting utility-backed debt, 32.5 million for the water fund, $54.7 million for WMRs, and this includes $46.3 million for the expansion of the bullhide treatment plant, another $8.2 million for the wastewater fund, and then 20.7 million for the solid waste fund, which includes $13.2 million for the new landfill, as well as $3 million for equipment for the new transfer station. So just like the tax-supported one, this shows the water fund debt service, and so at the end of 24, we're projecting outstanding debt service to be about $334 million for the water fund, and 24's debt service payment would be about 22.8 million. So just like the tax-supported, this is a chart of the history or the future for the debt service for the water fund. As you can see, and you see this for several funds, there's a huge cliff in certain points. In this case, it's around 2037, which provides us an opportunity to even out the debt service in those future years. In addition, on the slide, you'll see for the utility funds, we put some debt measures, including the debt ratio, and these measures kind of show the leverage for the utility funds. And so anything for, as far as a debt ratio, anything below one is where you want to be. And then we also, on the side, have the revenues comparative to the debt service for each So on the wastewater side, we're projecting total outstanding debt service at the end of 24 to be about $211 million, and the debt service payment that'll occur in 24 is about And just like water, this shows the projected future debt service and shows the debt service, debt ratio for the wastewater fund is about 0.49. debt ratio for the wastewater fund is about 0.49. On WMRs, you'll see the debt service in total goes up significantly from '23 to '24, and that's in part because of the expansion of the bullhide plant and the $46 million that'll be needed to be issued in order to continue with that expansion effort. And you'll also see that the debt service from the WMRs fund will be about $3 million for the current, for fiscal year '24. So WMRs has a smaller cliff than the other funds, which means we've, we've been working to smooth that out a little bit better. Fortunately for WMRs, it doesn't have a whole lot of debt presently. But obviously, with the expansion of the bullhide, that increases significantly. On the solid waste fund side, we're projecting total debt service at the end of '24 to be about $84.5 million, with the annual debt service payment of about $3.3 million in And on the solid waste fund, the debt ratio is about 2.7, .274, which is really good All right, and then we'll wrap up with the budget calendar. So on August 29th, during the special meeting at 6:00 PM here in Boski, we'll have the public hearing on the proposed budget, as well as the vote for the adoption of the budget. We also have the public hearing and vote on the resolution on the municipal drainage utility fee schedule revision, and then the second reading on the ordinance adopting a street maintenance fee. On September 5th, we'll have the public hearing and first and final reading on the tax rate ordinance. Any questions?
Nick Holmes here. I just got a, just a quick comment. Thanks for pulling this together. I know it's over in past meetings and budget audit, and this one, I always ask about, you know, what does our debt load look like and our debt service coverage ratios? Coming from an investment banker, I like to look at those kind of ratios. It's not exactly parallel in fund accounting versus gap, but it's, it's still, this one is very enlightening, and I appreciate it. Because we're all challenged up here, and to me, the number we always start with is $2 billion worth of capital improvement projects really to get Waco where it needs to be. How, what do we chip away at every year? And what do we prioritize every year to, to address that? And you can pay for it in several ways, either pay as you go, which some cities, I think, still do that. But I think the thoughtful leverage here that we're implementing here makes a lot of sense, matching that old banking term, match the useful life to the term of the debt, and make sure we can, we can cover that. So with the new growth and the deferred maintenance, we just have so much going on, and I applaud you guys on figuring out a way that we, that we pay for it. And I think what we're doing here is a little bit of a Goldilocks test. What is the right amount of leverage? Is it too much? Is it not enough? Are we right on? I think we're, we're getting close to where, I still want to be super safe, and I think we are. We don't want to over-leverage our balance sheet. But I think we're thoughtful, again, even, even now, we're chipping away 100, 1200 million in time on this $2 billion project that comes down a little bit, but it gets bigger every year too. We're not blowing the bank here, and we still have some, quite a bit of debt capacity for future projects. And so I appreciate you thoughtfully and trying to carefully address the leverage situation here and the analysis that went into it. So thanks for the report.
Thank you, Councilmember. And one thing I'll add, that we're looking forward to the opportunity to sit down with our new financial advisor and get some fresh eyes on our entire financial portfolio and certainly our debt components, and, and get their wisdom and input into not only our existing debt, but future debt and how we structure that going forward so that we maintain those ratios correctly. So appreciate council's leadership and guidance and watchfulness on this, and we'll certainly take that forward and be working with our FA, bringing back some good information on how we can continue to do a good job in the future.
Any other questions? You guys, appreciate it. Now, are there any requests for future gen items? Notice as the work session, re-communicating regular session for executive session is read into the record by the city secretary at 4:38 PM.
Notice is hereby given that the city council will go into executive session in accordance with the following provisions. Attorney briefing Texas Open Meetings Act, section 551.071, House Bill 1750, 2308, and 3492, passed in the 88th regular session of Texas Legislature. Real property, Texas Open Meetings Act, section 551.072, and economic development, Texas Open Meetings Act, section 551.087. We are now in executive session.